Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, March 22nd, meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee meeting. If you would join me, please, to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. To introduce our members, and we'll start with Sarah.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Jack Keefe, Blackstone.
Dana Lake, Student Council President.
Diane Robin, Blackstone.
Tammy Lemieux, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Erin Vinaco, Millville.
Jane Reggio, Millville.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
One call, Business Manager.
At this point, we'll turn over to Anita.
All right, so, long time no see. So, since we last met, winter sports have come to an end, with some of our teams ending with some of their strongest seasons yet, as we saw with boys and girls basketball, for example. Spring sports are now starting up, as tryouts have been taking place every day after school. This week, we wish the best of luck to our spring athletes, as they spring into their new season. Student council attended our state conference two weeks ago, where we got to experiment with leadership in the MASC labs. It was a great experience, as always. Our council members got to participate in workshops, hear top-ranked keynote speakers, and network with over 1,000 other student leaders from across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Jess and a couple of our other members got to experience presenting a workshop on the state level for the first time, which was quite an accomplishment for them. And we're also proud to share that we were awarded with Gold Council of Excellence for the 2017-2018 school year. As president this past year, I can tell you, this has been one of the hardest-working groups that we've ever had, and it makes me incredibly proud that we got to bring that home, and see that our state organization recognizes the hard work that our members have done. About a week ago, on March 14th, many students came together to memorialize the 17 victims of the Parkland shooting this past February. It was an inspiring 17 minutes, and I just want to thank all of the students that attended, and thank administration for being so cooperative with the students of BMR coming together that day, on such an important day. Tomorrow, during support period, there will be a meeting in the auditorium for seniors that are interested in participating in our new fourth-quarter internship program. This program is meant to give students the opportunity to go out into the real world for work experience during school hours before graduation. So, we look forward to the start, and hopefully, success of this new program. And lastly, this weekend, our middle and high school music ensembles will be attending our MICA performances, where our ensembles perform, and then are awarded by a panel of prestigious judges, depending on our performance. So, we encourage everyone from the community to come out, and just for anyone that's interested. Seventh-grade band will be performing on Sunday at 12:30 at Hawkington High School. Eighth-grade band will be performing on Saturday at 1:30 at Hawkington High School. High School Concert Band will be performing on Saturday at 8:30 at Bellingham High School. And High School Wind Ensemble will be performing Saturday at 4 o'clock at Bellingham High School. And that's all that's happening at BMR. Any questions?
How many days left?
Somewhere between 34 and 30. School days.
The snow days haven't bothered you at all.
Yeah. Well, there's been the question of, do we really not have to make them up? And everyone keeps saying no, so I'm just gonna go with it.
Well, congratulations on the gold status, and good luck on the stand weekend.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We are going to move our agenda around just a tad, and we are going to move to the approval of the field hockey co-op program. We're moving Jill up, so she can go home and rest. So, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having me. I did email Superintendent a while back about possibly doing this co-op, and I'm just gonna share some of the statistics, or stats, I should say, with you guys. So, the breakdown by season, so in 2015, we had 33 kids for two programs, JV and varsity.
Jill, excuse me for one second. Could you just clarify what town we're co-opping with?
Yep. The request is to co-op with Douglas.
Okay. That's what I thought. Our paperwork says a different town, and I thought it was unbelievable that they would wanna co-op, so...
In 2016 season, we went down to 31 kids for two teams. And then, in 2017 season, we went down to 29 for two teams. Last year's season, the JV team did not play a full 11-on-11. We were able to keep the JV team, but with the request of playing 9v9 for other teams, or 8v8, due to the fact of the lack of numbers. In the past two years, Douglas has not had a program. They canceled their program two years ago mid-season, which was unfortunate for our league, because we really only have five league teams in our league. Whitemanville does not have a field hockey team. So, dropping it down to just four is kinda hard for, you know, making it to districts and what have you. So, they approached me at one of our AD meetings to possibly do a co-op with us, and we would be the hosting school. It would not cost the district any extra funding. They would get bus to us, or get their own transportations to our school, similar to the way Hopedale is with our football program. I did reach out to the AD over there. They have about five to seven high-school-only kids that are interested in continuing with the season, or with the sport. And the co-op will not take away from any BMR kids with that little of numbers, will just help us grow our program a little bit better. So... Any questions?
Any questions?
So, do we have any cost, like, coach stipend?
Nope. It would just, well, it would be our regular two coaches, for a JV coach and a varsity coach, the normal cost of, like, any other sport.
Do the Hope, do they pay user fees?
They would pay our user fee.
Or they pay it...
Yep. They would pay the same way the Hopedale kids pay our user fee, the Douglas kids will pay our user fee as well. So, they would still pay that, and like I said, transportation-wise, they'd know to come to BMR. They would get their own ride there.
So, how does that work on game day? So, football's a little different, because they play on the weekend, so...
Yep. So, what we've been doing with lacrosse, which we also co-op with them, is we usually allow students to leave a few minutes early if they need to, if it's like a faraway place. And I did reach out with Douglas, and they were under the same agreement, where if we were playing a team where we needed to leave at like 2:15 or 2:20, they could get the kids to us for the bus.
Okay. So, they transport the kids here, and then they travel as a team?
Correct, yep.
And you're saying, so you're saying field hockey is 11 versus 11?
Yep.
Varsity and JV?
Yep.
And adding an additional five to seven kids is not going to cost our kids to be cut from a team, or lose playtime?
Correct. It would just help our program grow, and in the end, it will hopefully help Douglas as well, if more kids feel interested in having that program back, then they can start their own program, and then in the end, the whole league would benefit from it as well, having an extra team within our league for field hockey.
Any other questions? Somebody like to make a motion?
Is this a one-year, a year-by-year agreement? How does it work?
It goes for two years. So, it would be for two years, and then we can revisit it after two years. If after a year, you know, Douglas has 30 kids that are interested, then they would start their own program. We don't need to use it for the full two years. It's just on a need-be basis.
Everybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve the field hockey co-op program with Douglas.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Well, thank you guys very much.
Can I ask you one other question? So, you just said the two-year, are we on a two-year agreement with football, and hockey, and lacrosse?
Yep.
So, football's coming up?
Football will come up for their, re-up for their co-op, and...
This year?
This year.
And two.
Lacrosse is still in their last second year right now, and then hockey is in their, will be going into their second year in the winter.
So, where do we stand with football? Are they asking to continue?
They are. At the AD meeting, I approached their AD, asking if they're still interested in doing this co-op, which kinda benefits us, and they said they are.
Okay. Has there been any interest, or are there any towns that you could think of that we'd be able to find the same type of arrangement for girls JV and varsity basketball? To correct, to fix our program numbers on that side? Bringing the towns to us, obviously?
I mean, that's definitely something I could look into.
Okay.
Hasn't really been much of a, I know experts didn't have a JV team this year, but they did have a middle school and a varsity.
Right. So, maybe something with them to, you know, to get our program reset for the next few years? To, I know there's been a lot of talk about building that sport in particular. I mean, it seems like we keep fitting it in for all the other sports, and that is one that has been lacking for the last few years, for the girls.
Yep.
So, I would appreciate you looking into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
We're gonna change our agenda again, and I will entertain a motion to move to executive session for...
Are we gonna do warrants first?
Union and non-union personnel. And we will return to the meeting within a half an hour. So, somebody want to make that motion?
So, moved.
By Erin, second. By Diane. Roll call, Diane?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
We will return in a half an hour. So, as you all know, last week in our public hearing, we reviewed a budget and discussed our needs. We will, as we continue this process, actually adopt that budget by Cost Center, but for purposes of moving forward in the budget process, we need to certify that dollar amount to go forward to our towns, so that they can receive this information in a timely matter to prepare for the annual town meeting. So, we have several motions before us, which generally, we do is work our way around the table, and somebody reads one, and the next person seconds it, and we move around. So, Diane, I'm gonna start with you.
First one?
First one, please.
Move to adopt a gross operating budget for the 2018-2019 school year in the amount of $24,130, oh, it's getting a little smaller there, $39,028.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Diane, and seconded by Tammy, to adopt a gross operating budget for the 2018-19 school year in the amount of $24,139,028. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Tammy, you're next.
Oh, sorry. A motion to move to apply the following reimbursements to reduce said gross operating budget for the 2018-2019 year. Chapter 70, $10,915,189. Regional Transportation, $472,648. And School Choice/Charter Offset, negative $308,000. Above reimbursements total, $11,79,837. The total net operating budget for 2018-2019 is $13,59,192.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Tammy, seconded by Tara, to apply the following reimbursements to reduce said gross operating budget for the 2018-19 fiscal year. Chapter 70, $10,915,189. Regional Transportation, $472,648. And School Choice Charter Offset, negative $308,000, for a total of $11,79,837, which brings the total net operating budget for the 2018-19 is $13,59,192. All those in favor? Signify aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay. Go.
I move to assess the amount of $9,663,413 to the Town of Blackstone, to be applied to the operating budget for the 2018-2019 year, which includes $6,317,741 for the minimum contribution, $1,347,481 in exclusionary costs, and $1,998,191 in supplemental investments.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Tara, seconded by Diane, to assess the amount of $9,663,413 to the Town of Blackstone, to be applied to the operating budget for the 2018-19 year, which includes $6,317,741 for the minimum contribution, $1,347,481 in exclusionary costs, and $1,998,191 in supplemental investments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to assess the amount of $3,333,778 to the Town of Millville, to be applied to the operating budget for the 2018-2019 year, which includes $2,74,258 for the minimum contribution, $507,276 in exclusionary costs, and $752,244 in supplemental investments.
Moved by Erin, is there a second?
Second.
Move by Erin, seconded by Tara, to assess the amount of $3,333,778 to the Town of Millville, to be applied to the operating budget for the 2018-19 year, which includes $2,74,258 for the minimum contribution, $507,276 in exclusionary costs, and $752,244 in supplemental investments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd move to apply the following amounts to the gross operating budget for the year 2017-2018.
That's a typo.
2018-2019 Medicaid, $60,000, interest $2,000, total $62,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, move by Jack, seconded by Diane, to apply the following amounts to the gross operating budget for the year 2018-19. Medicaid, $60,000, interest $2,000, for a total of $62,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $426,379 to be assessed solely to the Town of Blackstone, which includes $152,388 for the FWH Middle School, $98,047 for the BMR High School sewer connection, and $175,944 for the roof projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Sarah, seconded by Diane, to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $426,379 to be assessed solely to the Town of Blackstone, which includes $152,388 for the Hartnett Middle School, $98,047 for the BMR High School sewer connection, and $175,944 for the roof projects. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $179,135 to be assessed solely to the Town of Millville, which includes $57,368 for the FWH Middle School, and $36,911 for the high school sewer connection, and $84,856 for the roof projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion by Diane, seconded by Tammy, to adopt a capital and interest budget in the amount of $179,135 to be assessed solely to the Town of Millville, which includes $57,368 for the FW Hartnett Middle School, $36,911 for the BMR High School sewer connection, and $84,856 for the roof projects. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, the statement of interest for the high school to go back into the Q for the MSBA projects for renovation of the high school.
Okay, go. So, much like as we applied for the accelerator repair projects for Millville Elementary for JFK and for AFM, we also need to take a vote to submit a core renovation on the high school, and that, those submissions are due by April 6th. So, the school committee needs to vote, and the motion is as follows. Moved by and seconded by, and unanimously voted, having convened in an open meeting on March 22nd, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 26th, 2018, for the Blackstone Millville Regional High School, located at 175 Lincoln Street, Blackstone, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies and priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the MSBA in the future, replacing all building systems, including mechanical and electrical systems, boilers, HVAC systems, all windows, doors, replacement of elevator, and all science labs. And hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting the statement of interest, that the MSBA in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of the application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from MSBA, or commits the Town Regional School District to filing an application for funding with the Mass. School Building Authority.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay, I just realized mine, I didn't turn my... Any, anybody would like to make that motion?
Should we read the whole thing?
You can say as read.
Just as read.
I'd like to move motion as read.
Second.
Move by Jack, seconded by Diane, to submit, can I make a statement of...
Interest regarding the high school.
...regarding the high school as read by Mr. Himmelberger. Is there any discussion?
Alan, this has to be submitted by which date?
Has to be submitted by April 6th.
And when will we hear?
Typically, we will hear sometime over the summer.
Okay. All those in favor?
Right. But we'll hear if it's been accepted or not, and then we go through the process.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of submitting this statement of interest for the high school project? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Public forum.
We have a public forum?
Warrants and minutes of the March 15th meeting. I would entertain a motion to move Consent Agenda A.
I would like to split consent as Agenda A.
Okay. So, warrants, any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Jack, seconded by Diane. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes of the March 15th meeting. Would somebody like to move that?
So moved. Second.
Move by Diane, seconded by Tammy. Terry, you got a new name, huh? All those in favor of the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Here. I'm abstaining.
Two abstentions.
Three.
Oh, three?
So, is that enough?
Does that make it? Yeah, you still have four.
Yeah, you're good.
You need five.
No, we need five.
You need five.
All right. So, they do that, we will have to return the next meeting to approve those.
And you need to do field trips, too. It's not on the agenda, but it's on, though.
There was one?
Yeah. There is, Ms. Sacco requesting student council to attend field trip. Right. But we split it, so it needs to be done as a field trip.
Yep. Okay. So, field trips, entertain a motion?
So moved.
Move by Diane, seconded by Jack. All those in favor of field trip?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Okay. Good. Field trips, okay. Okay. Report of the...
Just a building.
Okay. Mr. Himmelberger.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Reggio. The update for the buildings, as you know, all of our buildings are requiring ongoing repairs, and we really need to refurbish and to update our infrastructure. So, for now, we resubmitted both Millville Elementary and the AF Maloney School, and we will find out if those have been accepted, probably sometime in the June-July timeframe. The Kennedy project is moving forward. Thank you to the Town of Blackstone for approving the schematic design funding. That is ongoing and must be submitted to MSBA by May 9th, and then that project would be approved by the Board of Directors of the School Building Authority at their June 28th meeting, I believe, June 27th meeting. And we would hope that the Town of Blackstone could hold a special town meeting to approve the funding for that entire project, and then it does get reimbursed through the project milestones by MSBA. So, the project manager, Skanska, out of Boston, and the designer, TSKP, out of Hartford, are working now to get together the scope and sequence of the window repair replacements and the boiler replacements at Kennedy. And so, we are in the third step out of the eight steps as we go through that project. Again, to caution the Town of Blackstone that both Kennedy and Maloney need other commitments to replace other infrastructure that is not covered under the ARP with MSBA, which, because we could only submit one core project, we have chosen the high school. We hope that that project does get approved at that June Board of Directors meeting, because we know that that high school needs a serious commitment to upgrade safety and security, the building systems, as well as curriculum and instructional areas. So, that is where we stand. It depends in terms of how many accelerator repair projects are submitted, and where the MSBA deems Millville Elementary and Maloney as in the Q, obviously based upon how much revenue they have from sales tax, and the dollars that they have in total to play with each year. So, we resubmitted those, we have resubmitted, we are in process of resubmitting the high school. high school, and we, we are cautiously optimistic on those three projects. And that's where we are right now, and we will know at the June 27th board meeting if the Kennedy Project moves forward. I believe it will be, and there is an excellent chance that we will have that project committed to. The only next piece of that is to have that special town meeting, because then we have to vote the entire cost of the, the estimated cost of the project, even though it's reimbursed through the School Building Authority. So, that is the update as to where we are on our building projects. That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The school committee forum, Diane, you got anything?
Um, no. This being my last meeting. Thank you for allowing me to come back. I don't think you really had a choice. I just got appointed by the town, so hopefully, you know, I feel I contributed. And if you ever find yourself short again, call me. I like these little short stints. I like them, just, just the right amount, you know? So, so, it was great to be back.
We very much appreciate you picking up the gauntlet, especially during the last few months that we've had, so, thank you very much. I don't know, maybe you get to take your sign again.
No, leave it up there, you never know.
You never know.
You never know. Come back again.
Tammy? Before I rename you?
Nothing for tonight.
Tara?
I would just like to say thank you to Diane, because you were definitely an asset to us in the last few months, especially with the superintendent search, so...
I'm thinking, I'll leave this here, and I'll have little devil horns on next time I come back. Somebody be like defacing it, making funny names on it.
But you were an asset in our search process, and I, I appreciated all of your insight. And I also, then the only other thing I wanted to ask, Alan, was PD Day is next Thursday, March 29th. Could you just give us a rundown of the daily schedule for that?
Yes. Thank you, Erin, for that. So, next Thursday, March 29th, was selected as the professional development day. We have a very important agenda for that day. All staff will partake in Alice Training, which is the, the new protocol for dealing with active shooters, and it's been widely adopted. And unfortunately, we have two more this week. There's now been 17 since the start of the year on school campuses. So, this training is, is timely. We certainly thank both our school resource officer, Dave Loudon, Officer Loudon, as well as the other five officers from surrounding towns who will be here to assist in the training. And then, obviously, as it moves forward, there is another component that will probably be introduced in the fall that engages the students.
So, just, what does that morning look like for the teachers?
So, everybody will report to the high school auditorium at 8 o'clock, all 290 of us, and to begin the training. And then, after about 45 minutes to an hour, everybody will then adjourn to their home bases, wherever they are, the buildings they spend most of their time in, to be trained further in individual scenarios within each building. And it is important, and forget the, all of the political commentary, it is most important for us, and we are fortunate to have such quality trainers that will be assisting. And I think it's, it's certainly time well spent for all of us. And then, obviously, the next phase is to incorporate students. It obviously is age-appropriate, and not too good into ancient history, but if you remember Sandy Hook, December 14th, 2012, there was a kindergartner who led his class across that parking lot. So, this training becomes very important, and then we will have lunch, and then 12 to 2. We have a variety of programs offered throughout the rest of the day. So, it is an important day. Good Friday follows, and then we have a, a few more days till we get to the end of the year. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All quiet on the Blackstone front.
Sarah?
I do wish those who are running for election a fair and good run at that. I know that in the Town of Millville, there are several candidates running for the Board of Selectmen position, and that was really nice to see, to give the voters some options. And anybody interested in learning who they are, Ken, Tim Labonte, one of our tech folks, has put together a great video where they introduce themselves, and so I would encourage people to watch that. I would encourage everybody to go out and vote. That is our civic right and our civic duty, so I hope people will do that. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 12th, and it will be our annual reorganization, so any new members would be present, or hopefully be present at that time, and we will have our elections. So, anyone interested in having a position on the school committee, in the board, should consider that. You may go backwards.
I just wanted to send out condolences from our town to a family in Grafton who recently lost their junior in high school, Alexandra Valores, who passed away on March 19th, who is a student with our, you know, a lot of our community kids over at BBT, and I think our hearts go out to that community as they deal with that tragic loss. Sorry to end on that note.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Again, the next meeting, April 12th. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.